Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show all members of the conference,self supervisor Wickman. If there's anybody from the public that wants to make a comment to the board, they will need to go over to the table and read the script and fill out the form to make a public comment. Table's right over there. At the end, we will reserve about thirty minutes for public comment, but we'll only give three minutes to speak on the topic. The board will not respond unless the chair allows it. So consent agenda. I get a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, new hire. Got a name, I hope.
Yeah, Coleman Pride.
Cool?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. My second week training of the detention officer down there.
Okay.
How do you like that?
Yep. Learned a lot right now, so.
Oh, yeah? What's your background?
I was selling roofing and exteriors for IMS exteriors in Council Bluffs.
Oh, is that right?
Yep. Yep, working for Jesse Shay there, so yeah, I was doing that this spring and summer.
That's where I saw you at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so yeah, you heard me popping in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just applied out there during the summer for some, for the fall and winter. So I was getting started on it.
You'll be inside.
Yep. Yep.
Pay attention. Good.
Yeah, stuff a lot.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice speaking.
If you ever have any spare time, ten o'clock on Tuesdays, you can come and see us.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Thanks, Cole.
Yep.
Appreciate you coming in.
Go recruit some of your friends for us.
I'll do my best. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Take care. Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, second consideration of ordinance number twenty-five dash oh-three in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Potawatomi County, Iowa by changing the district designation of approximately forty acres from a Class A three riverfront ag production to a Class 1A limited industrial district.
We already been through this.
Correct, yeah, this is a second consideration. This is from, the application was made by Armstrong Investments. It's the forty acre piece directly to the east of the industrial park off one hundred ninety-second street. It was very successful in that venture, and they had the opportunity to gain this other forty acre piece of that back there. Not sure what's going to end up landing back there right now, there's a couple of things, but this is just one step in the process, get it switched over to industrial, so.
Motion to approve, second.
I wonder what the traffic solution's going to be down there.
The new school one, it's gonna be interesting real quick.
It's already interesting.
There hasn't been a layout for that yet, has there?
No.
Okay. For the school and stuff.
Nah, not that I've seen.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Belt?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shane?
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen?
Aye.
Okay, Matt's up again, Director, Planning and Development, second consideration of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh-four, in ordinance to amend the Pott County, Iowa zoning. Ordinance Chapter Eight to comply with the new state law regarding accessory dwelling units and the zoning board of adjustments to remove eight point oh-nine oh point oh-two oh point oh-one regarding political campaign signs.
Anything to add?
I did find the state code section on the campaign signs, if any of you would like to review that. There are no time limits in, um, in that piece of it. So, and I did look across other counties out there. There are a few of them that do have language that is similar to ours, uh, that they're in the process of knowing that they, hey, we gotta delete that out of there. Um, Polk County has them listed in there under an exemption for a sign permit. And it does, they said they gotta modify theirs because there's talks about a time limit in there, but it does refer you back just to the state code section on it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
Is there, um, ADA, is there a rule that you can only have one per parcel then?
In the state code section?
Well, in the ordinance or what? With ADUs?
Oh, with ADUs?
Yeah.
Uh, from the state, it's a minimum of one.
Minimum of one?
Yes, we have to allow one per parcel.
Does there have to be a primary?
There has to be a primary residence on the parcel.
Okay, on the parcel.
Yep, otherwise it is the primary residence.
Or the ADU is the primary residence?
No, an ADU is, is just that, right? It's an accessory dwelling unit. So in order to have an accessory dwelling unit, you have to have a dwelling unit. So, or you could call it a principal structure, primary dwelling, however you wanna refer to it, but there is going to be one, you know.
So.
If it's the first one there, it is the principal.
The ADU is.
Well, it's not an ADU at that point in time. If you, you could.
Right, it's, it's the principal resident.
It's the principal resident.
Which could be identical to the ADU.
Yes.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to be clear.
They have to have their own septic?
They do not necessarily have to have their own septic and/or their own well. It just has to be sized appropriately, uh, to hold both. So nor, uh, almost every situation that you see people build a house, you install the minimum size of a septic system. Very rarely do you see people go above and beyond unless they have immediate future plans to add bedrooms to it. So, if somebody goes to do one of these, you know, they're gonna end up having to add capacity to your septic system and/or a new septic system, but depending upon the location of it, I mean, septic's aren't something you wanna pump a long ways. So it's normally gravity fed, they're kinda right out there, out the back of the house. Uh, you're not gonna grab, gravity feed these things unless you're up on a pretty good hill or you put in a pump pit or. Pumps are kind of a nightmare, so people try to tend to stay away from pumps.
So I could have an ADU for me and an ADU for my kid.
No, we allow you to have one ADU.
What's that?
We allow you to have one ADU.
Well, one could be my resident, and the other one could be my kid's resident.
Well, you only, you still only have one ADU. I mean, one's free, one's a principal, one's an ADU.
Okay. Yeah, then I can't flip them back and forth, even though they're the same?
That'll be tax purposes, yeah, that's not the successor on that.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Chairman Belt?
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shane?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, Becky Lynn is.
Okay, Becky is ill.
Okay. Discussion decision authorized the board to sign resolution fifteen twenty-five entitled resolution for transfer of reimbursable M H D S Direct Expenses Fund to M H D S Regional Fund.
So Becky is ill today, but she, uh, sent me an, a, um, an email, uh, or text rather, and basically what we're doing here is we're transferring Suzanne Watson's, uh, transferable or reimbursable fund, excuse me, which is the payroll, um, balance as of the year end, transferring it back to the region to close out, back to the M H, M H D S Region Fund to close out the region. I think she's holding some back, um, just leaving enough for, uh, salary and, um, and then we may have to do another adjustment after that, but it's, it's basically just, um, I think Becky had talked about it once before, but it's just transferring the funds so that we can close out the, the region, but allow enough money for her to be able to keep payroll, um.
Mary Ann doesn't, isn't it till the end of December? They gave them to close everything up?
That's correct, yes, until the end of December to, to wrap up all.
Every little thing.
So to speak, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Becky did send us an email this morning that explained it as well.
Probably far more eloquently than I just did, so.
So.
Very similar.
Those were state funds anyway. Right?
Yeah, it's all, it's all pass-through money.
Right.
Yes.
So, I guess, well, I'm just curious why she just didn't round the numbers off and she just didn't carry over why this specific number was ninety-one cents. There's too many in the pod.
I think she's just trying to keep enough to finish.
Right, but I mean.
I, I attended the, uh, the, uh, disability services meeting. But, but yeah, they're, they're going through, you know, it's, it's all coming, end, end of life process. Uh, so they're just waiting for every money they've got coming to come in and, and whatever invoices they need to pay, they pay, but they're, they're, they're at the end of life going through that process.
Good. Roll call.
Chairman Belt?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen?
Aye.
Supervisor Shane?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Peggy Becker, Administrator of Veterans Affair, Discussion and/or Decision on Outside Storage for the Veteran's Services.
I shrunk a lot from the twenty-foot trailer.
What's that?
I shrunk a lot from the twenty-foot trailer.
Well, yeah, I saw that. What, did the city?
No, I, I never wanted the twenty-foot trailer, but.
Okay.
The option that was offered to me.
Okay.
So, what I really wanna store is my fire pits. There's two of them in that resin box, like, if you got my emails.
I did.
Is all that's gonna be needed to do that.
So that, that's what that thing, that, the last picture was? Those are fire pits?
Yes.
You, are, are those for enjoyment or are you cooking those?
That's for our flag retirement ceremony, the, at the end of October.
Are those like official pits?
They're, um, we had the, uh, fire department come down and look at them, and they meet the criteria for burning inside semi-city limits because they're covered.
Okay. Didn't they used to use barrels?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, they didn't, those flag retirement ceremonies can be pretty much anything you want them to be.
Did you, have someone make those or did you buy those?
No, those came off Amazon.
Oh, wow.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
It's a lot better than a big old container.
Yeah, it's just, I was trying to fill it, and that's what I came up with, you know, but.
Peggy, what, what, the container that you're looking to put down there, what, what's, what's, what's the size of that?
That, um,
fifty-two inches wide?
Yeah, like fifty-two wide, forty-three high.
Oh, okay, so, so not, not really noticeable?
No, no, it's like, it could hold, if you had it in your backyard, it'd be like a deck box, only a little taller.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, anyway.
And we, we saw the locations.
Yeah.
So how, how often would you do the flag burning?
Once a year is what we're planning on, but.
Okay.
It's gonna be an annual thing, or, because we have our Spring Resource Festival in the spring, and then fall we'll do this light, light burning ceremony.
Correct.
And then maybe you can talk Jason into painting that, yeah, in the container.
I don't think it needs.
No, it's, it's all plastic, whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's black and the top matches the actual side of the building, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
What, um.
You can do that on your time off.
You go, Jason, you got a spot that you wanna put that for kinda when you do snow removal and stuff, or how are you gonna handle that?
Uh, we store those down at Avenue C, and we could bring them to the Veterans Affairs Building when she needs them. My thought is that that thing's gonna get broken into the first week, sit there.
I, I did send several locations to consider to store it on the grounds, and the, the last one I emailed by itself yesterday was right by the, um, gas meter, which is actually under one of the cameras there.
Are you saying you guys will transfer them back and forth?
Sure.
Because that was one of the big deals we discussed.
Kind of what we did, I mean, we stored for all the other departments, and we don't have any of you, uh, transport that back and forth for, for Peggy.
What's Avenue C? I've never heard of Avenue C.
It's a, it's a storage facility.
Storage facility. We inherited.
What's the address of it?
Seventeen twenty-three Avenue C.
I ain't resource run all kinda.
Not that far down. It used to be Iowa Lottery way back in the day.
Where my desk came from.
It was sitting down there?
Sitting down there.
Well, you wanna give this a shot or?
I'm good.
Yeah.
That's what you wanna do?
I prefer the storage container, yes.
You just gotta work with Jason where you're gonna put it and such, so it's not, uh, you know, they're moving snow and stuff, but you got. Yeah.
We got the motion in the second.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Mary Eldridge, Assistant Human Resource, uh, Discussion and Decision on Various Options for Pricing, Placement Option for Promoting the County Engineer Position.
Yeah. It's been a different option. Um, I for sure think we should do the Iowa County Engineers Association. We can place that one for free and replace the last engineer position on there for Brandon's position. And then there's also the, like, ISAC, that is also free, that gets some traffic on there. And we can boost the job with Indeed, which we do with various jobs, and we get some success with that. But there is a fee with that one.
Personally, I'm okay with the fee. I think we need to.
Yeah, I agree.
To, to reach out to more people. And I, I think that's pretty important myself.
Um, you have the ICEA Services Bureau on your list? That was the recommendation from DOT, that was their, their primary spot.
Yes.
What was it?
Second to the bottom?
ICEA?
Yep, Services Bureau, okay.
Yep, that is that one.
All right. I don't work through all the acronyms to find them.
Sorry, yeah.
Do we want to hire a search firm? It's pretty clunky for us to receive resumes or applicants that marry forwards to us. And then as a board, we can't respond to the group as far as whether we want to pursue or not. Um, I just think it really drags down the effort. For example, we've got an applicant that came in earlier this week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he has no road experience. He has vast experience in government contracts, but again, he has no road experience. So we've got a pending applicant in the pipeline. What are we gonna do with it?
I like, how long is it, uh, set open?
Position?
Yeah. We have it running or it's open?
I have it open till the twenty-ninth, and then we'll just, that's this week, and we can change it, update the date.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. I did put a search firm on there, and it was just one that I was recommended I found for engineering, but that one was quite expensive. It is Davron, kinda towards the middle. They base it on like the pay. And they take a percentage of that.
That's probably a little more than we wanna spend, isn't it? I think.
I think it's urgent, I think it's beyond urgent, and I think whatever we need to do to accelerate this position, to find a qualified candidate.
So, you just have it on one site now, or what do you got?
We have it on Indeed and then just the NeoGo of our county website.
If you guys wanted to go through the recruitment type direction, I have an, I have a source, a free site, and they want to list the, the county engineer position too. I can compare my resource with what Mary has and see what their prices compare line up to. I, I, I would be interested in seeing what it would cost. Yeah, I, I agree, we need to. Again, we can just compare those two, and we can break, we can get the ones that she mentioned today, make the Indeed boost, this would be my recommendation, get the Indeed boost, get the free ones, get that all going. And we can compare a couple of different recruiting firms next week and see if we wanna move forward with.
I'd like to see what we're posting or what we're.
I would too. What kind of money are they, do you know?
That's what I, I'll follow up with that. I kinda said I don't have the authority to do that, but if you guys say, go ahead and reach out to them, I'll reach out to them and see what they wanna do. Or what they would offer.
What kind of a salary range do we wanna post?
Well, I think that's real salary or experience dependent, isn't it?
Right, you, you, you put the salary range and depending behind it, you put, depend on experience or training.
So where do we start at? What salary?
One number, one fifty something.
One fifty-eight?
Sure.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mary, for bringing. You're welcome. I found that on ISAC and it gave you, and I listed it by the county rankings, like, population. That's how I did that.
It's not been updated, but it's close enough.
Um, yeah, I think it was supposed to be twenty-twenty-five, but I don't know.
Oh, yeah, but there's been some shuffling.
Yeah. Yeah. And also have another county engineers in office as well. So, I think, yeah.
I see that.
Yep. Like Lynn, the engineer's been there five years according to this, when it was printed in twenty-twenty-five.
And I think, I haven't seen the job posting recently. I think it mentioned that you had to be an Iowa licensed engineer.
Yeah, correct.
And it's my understanding that we have reciprocal agreements with several other states like Nebraska and Illinois. So if they've got a license from those states, it's just a matter of submitting an application to add the Iowa endorsement. So I think we need to phrase our application such that eligible for Iowa civil or.
I, I would agree with that.
They need to really penetrate the metro area.
Do they require that they still?
On surrounding.
Take the Iowa test even though they're.
No, they don't.
We're okay with that?
They don't have to take that.
It's just a matter of.
Okay.
Yeah, getting their endorsement added.
It's a resume.
Okay.
Like with a lot of licenses, doctors and dentists, a lot of those. Um, and then, did you give that, or when we get it done, let's get it to MAPPA, they can post it out on their deal. Um, and there should be, there's probably some engineering societies in Nebraska, we can get it.
I did list some of those on the sheet as well.
Who's that?
It is.
Nebraska Society of Professional Engineers? Seventy-five bucks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then there was.
They don't have a lot of jobs posted on there, they got two when I looked.
Then they, then they, uh, then, uh, whatever the other.
NSPE, which was four twenty-five for thirty-day posting? National Society of Professional Engineers Career Center?
Where's that at?
The second one down.
No, where's it?
Oh, where's it at?
Yeah. The National Society of Professional, is that in DC?
I would have to double check where that was located, but they had jobs from all over the country posted on there.
DC, okay.
Okay, so what do we do after we start getting applicants in? Can talk to each other, right?
Right.
Well, I would be, Susan, you, you mentioned finding somebody that would coordinate. I would be open for that, I mean, um, you know, some kind of, whatever, person that does that.
Who would know?
Yeah.
Engineering language and could ask the right question.
There's certainly, there's certain entities out there that, that do that. I'd be all for looking, doing something along those lines.
And Mitch, it sounds like you've got a lead on one of those, or?
Yeah, what they specifically do is locate engineers. So, it would have, that'd be, that'd be a hiring that we'd have to do. So that's why I say we can compare our prices in our notes and see what we can come up with and bring that back to you next week, but.
Yeah.
I think in the meantime, I think you guys should probably approve all these other places to get them posted, because that way, that way if somebody applies before you hire somebody, they're not gonna count towards, you know, getting credit, finding you a hire as well.
And, uh, the app we got, was that not a military person?
Yeah.
So we, we have to interview him, I, I believe.
Take a look at that.
Pardon?
Okay, we can take a look at that.
Yeah.
I, well, yeah, I don't wanna discuss too much of the, the application.
Right. But I think that we have some sort of responsibility to do that.
Came from the Lincoln Post. Okay.
So, yeah.
So are we gonna set these or get these posted this week?
Yeah. Did you have specific places?
Well, I think we're gonna do several. Uh, the top three, without a doubt. What do you, what's everybody think?
Yeah. Yep. Also, I, I attended the College of Engineering, UNO's College of Engineering.
Yeah.
Uh, the college, the engineering college itself has, you know, once you graduate and looking for a job, they have, uh, you know, they have entities that they use. I don't know if that's what you're checking into, okay.
Okay, I do have some of the colleges on here for their job boards, but we can check.
Okay, yeah, the job, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. Because graduates could go to work and then, you know, they, they realize that that's a resource that they can use if they're looking to move up the ladder, that kind of thing.
And the alumni can look on their.
Yeah, 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 you bet, you bet.
What about the National Association of County Engineers? The Iowa State Association of County Engineers? And down there, the Iowa County Engineers Association?
Yeah, that's the service here.
All those?
I think so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't decide to do the National Society of Engineers, I mean, let's see.
And did you have an end rate you would like to put on there or just the starting salary?
No, it'd be a range. You know, like one fifty to two twenty-five depending on, you know, their training and expertise and background.
You wanna go that high?
You, you, you don't have to go that high.
Polk County's one seventy-six. That's the big.
Now, one seventy-eight is Johnson County. Is there a two twenty? I don't know if that's correct, if that's what's on ISAC.
What do you think of one fifty to one eighty?
I don't care, whatever number you wanna put up.
Everybody?
It's all, it's all negotiable.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes.
Susan, what do you think?
That'll work.
Yeah, does Mary?
Fifty-one eighty?
Sure, I mean, that's just the salary, and like Scott said, it's all negotiable. Good.
So you identified, I don't have Mary's sheet in front of me, so I don't have.
They, they haven't made a motion or second, yeah.
We got anything else to discuss?
Um, I sent a text to Paul Osman, and he's the one that has the Osman Consulting Services, that was the Crawford County Roads Engineer.
Okay.
Um, I've asked him if he would be available to come into our meeting on September second to present a little bit more about what his scope of services would. to present a little bit more about what his scope of services would allow, provide. And it's, it's in addition to our interim engineer, but it would be more specific to projects. Um, specifically the Underwood project. Just to get us through this hump until we do get a permanent engineer in place.
Okay. That project is pretty important.
Yeah, but it's combined with five or six other projects in the state and they're not, some of them aren't where they need to be because they all have to be bundled in here at the same time.
Right. We don't want to be the one that drops the ball.
Well, somebody drops it, so not always going to be us. It's not always going to be them.
Okay, so what do you want to make on this motion?
I think we named, we named some outlets to post our jobs. Is that correct?
You did.
Okay, you got, you've got that list.
I got it. The National Association of County Engineers, Iowa State Association of Counties and Iowa County Engineers Association for sure.
If you want to write pay.
What else were we going to add?
For Indeed.
Pay the boost on Indeed.
Indeed, okay.
Did you want to do, they recommend thirty six daily for standard or sixty daily for premium. Our nine one one does ten dollars a day and they get fair amount of applicants, but it's not as niche as the engineer.
I'm, I'm all for doing something, so.
Oh my.
Yeah.
Let's get going on this.
So what do we need the motion to read?
Oh, the first one.
Placement options for motion.
Okay, so we're going to boost Indeed.
Mm-hmm.
And how much would you like to do that a day? At the daily rate they charge.
What do you recommend? Standard?
Their standard is thirty six and their premium is sixty. Do you want to start with standard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see what kind of response we get and if we need to boost it to sixty.
How does nine one, how does nine one one get away with ten bucks?
It doesn't get as much traffic or showing as high as if you did their standard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a zero, zero to a hundred?
You don't have to boost the job.
So how much does a hundred get you?
I don't even know if they have a hundred because sixty is their premium.
Okay.
And that was the highest it showed on there.
I'd get platinum.
We're moving to standard first and then if maybe we go to premium.
Mary, do you recommend we go to?
Yeah.
The premium?
Do they guarantee something with the premium?
No.
They don't. They recommend the sixty for standard. I think we could try it.
A thirty six for standard?
Thirty six, yes, sorry, thirty six for standard.
I would say so.
And that's a day.
It's a day times seven. I'm seven days. We could do it for thirty days.
Yeah. That's me.
Are we tripping over ourselves? Do we go to premium?
It's been posted on Indeed already.
Okay.
For six weeks, eight weeks. And we've gotten four applicants.
Mm-hmm.
Three applicants. Okay. I, I don't know if Indeed's going to get us anywhere.
Have we been paid for that, Susan? Indeed?
I think it was just a one time.
It's on our package, yeah.
Oh, good.
Um, I think we'll get more bang for the buck out of the Nebraska Society of Professional Engineers. And that's seventy five dollars for thirty days. And the job boards at the local universities that Mary's got listed. And we were going to do the, um, the National Association of County Engineers. The Iowa State Association of Counties.
Yeah.
Which is ISAC. And the Iowa County Engineers Association Services Bureau.
Let's give them all a try for thirty days.
In addition, um, to looking at recruiter, is that the right term?
And you'll have that next week, you think?
Okay. See which one's a better. Yeah, I'm all, I'm all for getting this position out there. A wide broadcast.
So did we leave Indeed in or did we take Indeed off?
I'm, I'm, I'm for Indeed.
Are you, right now, you, part of the motion is to, to boost Indeed at thirty six dollars a day. Is that staying or altering? My, my motion does not include it. How's that?
Okay.
Okay, I'll go with that. I think we can get a good grip on these other ones. What do you think of Scott?
Check with MAPPA. And then check with Omaha, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Hey. So we got a motion? It's a long motion.
It is a long motion. Do you want me to read it back or Supervisor Miller, do you have it?
You want to read it back? That would.
Okay, just.
Help all of us.
Um, so to maintain Indeed as its current status, which is not part of the motion, but, uh, the Nebraska Society of Professional, so the, the motion to to increase the placement, pace, placement options for promotion of the county engineer position with the Nebraska Society of Professional Engineers. The job boards at UNL Creighton, Iowa State University and the University of Iowa. The National Association of County Engineers, the Iowa State Association of Counties and the Iowa County Engineers Association. Did I?
And MAPPA.
And MAPPA. And the Omaha Chamber of Commerce. Okay.
For thirty days?
I'm limited on.
Okay. I'm good with that motion.
Sure.
Are you making that, Susan?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
I, I have used Indeed before and I've been satisfied with their output, okay, product. But I, I don't, at some point, would you give me or give us what, what constitutes premium? And what that includes, standard, and at some point, in case they, we go back down that road, okay?
Any other discussion?
Do we need to include the range, the salary range we're going to post in the motion?
Need to, but we need to see what, what they're going to propose to post. Hopefully it has a range on it. If you want to put it on there. If you want to put it in there, I don't.
One eighty to one eighty?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, with salary range of one fifty eight to one eighty.
Depending on.
Experience.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, discussion on hiring county engineer.
This would be where we make a motion to look at a consultant.
I, I will just bring him to the table next week and then we can take motion or take action on that at that time.
Thanks for looking into that, Mitch.
I'd like to leave this topic on the agenda for the foreseeable future until we get a county engineer hired, just so that we can talk about it every week and stay on top of it and know who's doing what. What the interest is.
I like it.
Yeah, because we cannot let any new projects until we have a county engineer and an interim doesn't count. A consultant doesn't count. It has to be a full-time county engineer.
Not true. A lot of counties that don't have county engineers that are letting projects.
Okay.
So if you see the list of zeros on here, who doesn't have county engineers? Still have projects.
True. They, they've got agreements.
Right.
Okay.
Good. Uh, so we'll leave that on there, which is fine. Uh, update from committee members for past week, yeah.
Uh, I, I attended the Western Iowa Community Action Meeting in Harlan, Iowa. They are, they are the organization that, uh, has, heads up the, like Head Start program, that kind of stuff. Uh, also, uh, resources for low-income residents. They are a busy group. Uh, they're basically federal, federal and state, uh, funded, but they are, they are busy and they, I think they do the job. And then also, what else? Uh, I filled in for, for, uh, Tim, uh, yesterday on the, uh, Mental Health and Disability Services meeting. Uh, again, I, I think I mentioned this before too, they're just, they're kind of going through their end of life process right now. They're going to be organizing, doing, their, their process is going to evolve into a, to a kind of a new, new type of a process for uh, disabled and veterans and people who need, need those kinds of resources. So that's where it's at. But, uh, they're, uh, they're, they're, they're getting, they're moving things along, so that's where.
Met with the mayor last week on this ATV park. We're going to bring them some of the people in to give us all an update next week. Then I went to ISAC up in Des Moines for a few days. And then went to events, southwest Iowa. And then went to Trainer for their TIF meeting on Friday. Went to the open house at the recycling center. Um, I did not make the car show, so that was, sorry to make, miss that. Ran out of time.
It was a great day.
Yeah, nice day.
Big show.
Nice day. Susan?
Um, Supervisor Wickman, Mitch and I attended the Public Safety Communications Task Force meeting. It was our second meeting as a group. Um, Motorola came in and submitted their proposals and now we're looking at refining a few questions. Um, getting more answers, looking at funding opportunities. And we should be, our third meeting should be very productive as far as what our plans will be and when we're going to present to this board. Um, I also attended ISAC. Um, I thought the Wednesday curriculum was ideal. Laughter is medicine was their icebreaker session and it was something that I really needed. Um, and Smizik from Ayers and Cooney was the attorney who did the um, sessions on the afternoon. They were focused on conducting HR investigation interviews. Um, the importance of handling investigations in a timely manner and best practices. And then she followed up with a second session on managing conflict in the workplace and beyond. Um, it's very timely. There's turmoil at every level of government. And apparently ISAC has been getting lots of information and they prepared the curriculum with that in mind, so it was really good. Um, there was a push to get involved with NACO. We talked about the legislative recommendations, um, that, that, um, that county supervisors are all behind. Protection of home rule is most important. Um, there'll be a lot more information coming out about that. Um, funding for unfunded mandates and a need for the Board of Supervisors to be helpful as legislators consider property tax changes. Um, there's also, um, it was hot news up there that the United States Supreme Court is going to hear the CO2 pipeline um, cases from Shelby and Story County. So there was a lot of enthusiasm and excitement around that. And there may be an opportunity for Potawatomi County to participate in an amicus brief. And I want to talk to Supervisor Bell about that before we put it on the agenda, so. Oh, absolutely.
We got a pipeline already. I was at, um, ISAC also. It, uh, it's always good to see and hear from people around the state what is good and bad and ugly. And we all seem to have our differences and different things happening. Um, and then I was at, um, Prevention Means Progress meeting yesterday, so last week was pretty much taken up by ISAC. Okay. Public comments.
Chana Anderson, one nine three seven seven, three hundred and fortieth street in Oak Horn, Iowa. I apologize, I missed the last two weeks of great in here, to be quite honest. Um, I spent some time with my grandson. It was great. Um, but I did watch, uh, two weeks ago live, uh, or listened in on my drive up to Minnesota and I watched the first half last week uh, live and had to catch the second half later on that evening because we were doing great grandparent things. Um, Susan, I really appreciate your dedication to looking into this county engineer thing. Um, I just, I think it's a hole you never should have been in. I wish Tim was here, um, because he was the one that threw the motion that created this hole. We're sitting here at well over three months with no engineer, nobody signing up to be an engineer. I don't know who would want to work in this county, to be honest. I'm not surprised the HR director resigned. Um, though we're paying her an arm and a leg to not work, which is horrible misuse of our tax dollars. Um, it was absolutely lazy to go with the, the first interim engineer that you found. First person I called said yes, though I didn't make any more calls. Didn't even bother to see if anybody else could maybe give us some more hours. Um, when Mills County came back and said two hundred dollars an hour instead of the hundred and fifty that we were hoping to be able to get them for, you voted yes. Not, hey, let's go look for, see if somebody else can give us a better deal. Only six hours. Let's not go look and see if somebody can give us some more hours. No, we'll go with it. Why do I think that you went ahead and went with it? Because you're up against a wall that you never should have been up against to begin with. You're terrified that you're going to get in some sort of trouble or some accident's going to happen and you're going to get your asses sued. Because you're up against a wall you never should have been up against to begin with because three of you decided you wanted to go a new direction that you've never once told anybody in this county what it is. Now you're spending money on trying to find somebody that just honestly doesn't seem to exist in this area. Who would even want to work here? I've had numerous county employees contact me via social media and tell me just the mood in this courthouse, the mood for county employees here is just absolutely horrible. The number of people that are already looking outside of work or working for Potawatomi County that have told me that they can't wait to get out of here is just huge. People are going to be dropping like flies because you treat them like shit.
You, what else? The motion adjourned?
So moved, checked.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing that, we are adjourned.